He was always hiring. He knew somebody.
Well, you know, it was funny.
We had another one before that just says his name is this one.
I have worked with Susan Lawrence for years.
In the telephone, yes, we had a good time today.
And she knew that I was going to retire from the health department and then there was a lady who worked with Susan that was going to retire. So she asked me, gave me her resume. So they wrote, they wrote a job description. So they said, she's like, okay, it's pushing out. So I did, he didn't call me, and I had to sort of do this. Well, I didn't realize until later what had happened because when I saw it, I wanted it to go in there. Okay, Steve.
And I never looked back. Any of us, when I talked to them yesterday, I said, hey, did you get my email?
This meeting of the Norwood City Council is hereby called to order. Please rise for the prayer and the pledge of allegiance. Our Father, who art in heaven, is a body we congregate in these council chambers. We pray for thy divine guidance that we may do all things well according to thy holy will. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening, everyone. Call the roll, please.
Mr. Bonzal.
Here.
Mr. Clark.
Here.
Mrs. Stickley.
Here.
Mr. Blair. Mrs. Hanahan. Mr. Sanker.
Here.
Mr. Mumper.
Here.
We do have five present, so we will go ahead and proceed. Excuse me. We have two requests to amend the agenda. They are both letters. One is a letter from Jerry Stoker regarding review for the preliminary and final PUD plan for Health United XU Hub 1723 Clenney Avenue that I would propose to make Communication Number Four. And then a letter from the Ohio Liquor Control regarding the denial of Sherman Market liquor license renewal that would become Communication Number Five. And then the letter from Mayor Williams regarding the executive session would be moved down to Number Six. Mr. Mumper.
Remove or amend the agenda as you just stated.
Seconded by Mr. Bonzal, is there any discussion? Call the roll, please.
Mr. Bonzal.
Yes.
Mr. Clark.
Yes.
Mrs. Stickley.
Yes.
Mr. Sanker.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Mumper.
Yes.
All members present voting aye, the motion carries. We have the minutes of the November 28, 2017 meeting, which were distributed prior by email. Mr. Clark.
You could approve the minutes as of Friday.
Seconded by Mrs. Stickley. Is there any discussion? Call the roll, please.
Mr. Bonzal.
Yes.
Mr. Clark.
Yes.
Mrs. Stickley.
Yes.
Mr. Sanker.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Mumper.
Yes.
All members present voting aye, the motion carries. We have no request to address council. We will move on to standing committees of council. The first is the Committee of the Whole regarding retiree benefit program. Dated 12/4/17 to the Honorable Council of the City of Norwood, Ohio, we, your Committee of the Whole, to whom was referred the retirees' benefit program, beg leave to submit the following report. Additional information is required regarding the following items. Can the Auditor's Office send all notices and collect responses? If the applicant misses the initial year, we should be able to apply in future years but receive no benefits in the year the application was missed. Can the Millennium Plan be canceled with a notice or is it renewed for a year? Initial applications and future renewals will be mailed by December 15 each year with follow-up notices sent in January and February to those who were not heard from. Clarify that when and if divorce ex-spouse is not covered from that date forward. Clarify if eligible retiree remarries, would new spouse be added? And it seems as though the definition would be no. Clarify if all on current list will remain covered or only those who meet eligibility requirements as outlined in the proposed ordinance? And can the penalty be applied to financial benefit payment if retirees are not paid on time, parentheses, May 15, equal to penalty paid to the employee retirement systems? This committee report will be sent to the Auditor's Office, Treasurer's Office, Law Department, Mayor, and Safety Service Director. Another Committee of the Whole meeting will be convened when these questions are answered. Respectfully submitted, Donna Lake Chairperson, James Bonzal, Andy Clark, Brandon Blair, Marilyn Hanahan, Joseph Sanker, and John Mumper. Mr. Clark.
Move that the committee report be accepted.
Seconded by Mr. Mumper. Is there any discussion? Mr. Bonzal.
Thank you, Madam President. So we, today by email, the council members did receive a redline version that has potentially some of the changes that we requested. Would you advise that it would be a good idea to go ahead and schedule a follow-up meeting?
We can do that if that's what you so desire.
I think that would be a good idea.
So I want to have a date in mind with the holidays coming up. I know Mr. Stith is back in town. I'm not sure what his work schedule is, but there were some. Thank you for your prompt answers, Mr. Moore. There were some other departments that we were waiting to hear from, but we can take care of that.
Yeah.
On Monday is good. Eighteenth? Monday, the eighteenth, what time? Want to do it at six again? Wasn't that a good time? Okay. So, Mr. Clark, do you want to amend your motion to accept the committee report and to call a Committee of the Whole meeting on December 18 at six o'clock?
Absolutely.
Mr. Mumper, would you amend your second?
Sure.
So the motion on the floor then is to receive and file the committee report and to call another Committee of the Whole meeting for Monday, December the eighteenth at 6:00 PM. Call the roll, please.
Mr. Bonzal.
Yes.
Mr. Clark.
Yes.
Mrs. Stickley.
Yes.
Mr. Sanker.
Yes.
Mr. Mumper.
Yes.
All members present voting aye, the motion carries. We have no second or third reading of ordinances or resolutions, so we'll move on to introductory readings of ordinances. And that is an ordinance authorizing the Safety Service Director to enter into a contract with Rumke of Ohio, Inc., to provide for the collection and management of refuse, recyclables, and yard waste for the city of Norwood for calendar years 2018, 2019, and 2020, as well as option years 2021 and 2022, and declaring an emergency. Mr. Sanker.
Madam President, I recommend we'd have all three readings of the ordinance and then also ask Mr. Gears if he's here to give us synopsis of what transpired with the contract.
We need six people to suspend the rules, so the only thing we could do tonight is have the first reading.
We'll just have the first one.
Okay, so have the first reading and then ask Mr. Gears to come up and speak on the issue. Seconded by Mr. Clark. Is there any discussion? Call the roll, please.
Mr. Bonzal.
Yes.
Mr. Clark.
Yes.
Mrs. Stickley.
Yes.
Mr. Sanker.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Mumper.
Yes.
All members present voting aye, the motion carries. Please have the first reading.
Ordinance authorizing the Service Safety Director to enter into a contract with Rumke of Ohio, Inc., to provide for the collection and management of refuse, recyclables, and yard waste for the city of Norwood for calendar years 2018, 2019, and 2020, as well as for option years 2021 and 2022, and declaring an emergency.
Mr. Gears, can you come forward and let us know what's different about this over the past five years? It was five years ago we had a contract?
Yes.
Five years ago?
We opened up bids and unfortunately, or fortunately, whatever you want to say, we only had one bidder. And per talking to Rumke, that's basically, they're the only ones been bidding around here at all. I mean, when anybody else puts out bids. There really aren't any big changes. The biggest change, I guess, we broke down the bid, you know, residential, multifamily, business. And I guess, if you want to call it, an increase. The refuse for residential went up 50 cents per month. The recycling with the 18-gallon bin, which are your red plastic bins, went up 90 cents. And if you have one of the big totes, the 65-gallon toter, it went up the same price. I mean, you only have one or the other. They aren't going to charge you $1.80 for both. And the yard waste went up 15 cents compared to the past five years. And the yard waste with the 90-gallon toter, it's still the same price. When you add it all up, the whole service went up $1.55 a month for the next three years, so.
And the last increase was five years ago?
Last increase would have been five years ago, and that takes into consideration, I guess, for about two years, two and a half years, we owed him anywhere between a half a million dollars and $600,000 that we didn't pay him, that we are caught up now, but we never paid any interest to anything. Multifamily, it went up because they don't have as many services, but it went up $1.40 a month. And your businesses, they went up, let's see, $2 a month. So, give and take. So that's really the only change in the whole thing. And those are locked in for the next three years. And just looking in the option years, one and two, garbage, I mean, right now, will be paying $9.40 a unit, and it'll be $9.68, so it's going to go up 20, 28 cents, so, a month. So I'm saying, you know, they're not, nothing outrageous.
Any questions, Mr. Gears? Mr. Bonzal?
Yeah, thank you, Madam President. In here it mentions that they do daily pickup Monday through Friday for the city receptacles in downtown area. It says, consisting of 200 containers along the right-of-way. Do those include, like, the ones in the neighborhoods, like, in front of the community center? And do they do those on a regular basis?
Yes.
Okay, so it is Rumke that picks those up?
Yes. And I mean, the biggest aggravation part that Rumke deals with, that they're good at, is you have a lot of businesses that put out their own garbage in those containers, especially in this area right here, so they don't have to pay a monthly fee. And a lot of the residents that rent on top of those places do.
Gotcha, yes, I have noticed, I have seen a resident of one of those places do that. So are we, if they don't, they're not required then to have an account with Rumke or have Rumke pick up their service in some way for us not to charge them? Like, why would we not just charge them anyways on their water bill?
Well, what we do is we charge the owner of the building. And so if they have five or six units, and some, they're paying their share, but the renters themselves just put it out on their own.
So the garbage, they're still collecting the fees for that garbage? It's just they're not putting it in their own can?
So I mean, it's not, they don't, the renters don't pay per se in these places, but the owners do with their water bill. And then you have some of them, if they have their square footage in the area, then they can get a small dumpster.
Great.
Okay.
Any other questions? Thank you, Mr. Gears.
Your word.
We have no administration reports or other requests to address council. Is there any unfinished business? Any unfinished business? Is there any new business? Mr. Sanker?
Yes, Madam President, I'm speaking with the auditors. We'd like to call a finance meeting for next Tuesday, the 19th. Hope to have a lot of their final numbers put together, the state auditors, for review and any changes for the year end by then. So I would say 6:30.
Okay, 6:30 here in council chambers?
Yes, ma'am.
And is this for just?
2017 and 2018 appropriations.
Okay. Great, so next Tuesday, the 19th, at 6:30 here in council chambers, Finance Committee meeting for 2017 and 2018 appropriations.
Yes, ma'am, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Sanker. Mr. Bonzal, do you have new business?
So, thank you. So I just wanted to wish the residents of Norwood a Merry Christmas. Our next meeting won't be till after Christmas, so just hope that everybody enjoys their holidays with their family and that it is a time of peace. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bonzal. I want to express sympathies to Tim Gary. My understanding is that his father passed away. And so I just want, while I didn't know him personally, I, Tim and I spoke of him, and I just want to express condolences to them, to the family, on his passing. Is there any other new business? Okay, we'll move on to communications. The first is a letter from Mayor Williams regarding mayor's court fines for November 2017.
Dear Madam President and members of council, enclosed, please find the report for Norwood Mayor's Court for the month of November 2017. Should you have any questions, please do not hesitate to contact me. Thomas F. Williams, Mayor, City of Norwood.
Mr. Clark.
Move that the report be received and filed.
Seconded by Mr. Sanker. Is there any discussion? Call the roll, please.
Mr. Bonzal.
Yes.
Mr. Clark.
Yes.
Mrs. Stickley.
Yes.
Mr. Sanker.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Mumper.
Yes.
All members present voting aye, the motion carries. Next is a letter from Chuck Barlow regarding monthly earnings tax report for November 2017.
To Norwood City Council, attached is a monthly report for November 2017 indicating collections in the amount of $1,028,79.79. This reflects an average year-to-date increase of 14.07% over 2016. Should you have any questions, please feel free to contact me. Chuck Barlow, Tax Commissioner.
Mr. Sanker.
Madam President, I would recommend that the report be received and filed and accepted as read.
Seconded by Mr. Mumper. Is there any discussion? Call the roll, please.
Mr. Bonzal.
Yes.
Mr. Clark.
Yes.
Mrs. Stickley.
Yes.
Mr. Sanker.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Mumper.
Yes.
All members present voting aye, the motion carries. Next is a letter from Duke Energy regarding adjustment to rider AMRP rates decrease.
To whom it may concern, this letter is to inform you that Duke Energy Ohio, Inc., Duke Energy Ohio, will file an application for an increase in rates with the Public Utilities Commission of Ohio, Commission, on or before February 28, 2018. The application will propose a decrease in rates of approximately $750,000 for rider AMRP, Accelerated Main Replacement Program Rider, for Duke Energy Ohio's gas distribution service, to be effective in May 2018. This decrease will result in a decrease of 11 cents per month for residential customers and represents a decrease in Duke Energy Ohio's gas rates of approximately 0.2% of currently existing rates based on a previously negotiated cap for this rate, agreed to by the interested parties in a stipulation and recommendation, and approved by the commission in an opinion and order dated November 13, 2013, in the matter of the application of Duke Energy Ohio, Inc., for an increase in rates, case number 12-1685-GA-AIR. Under its accelerated main replacement program, Duke Energy Ohio has installed plastic mains and service lines to replace the cast iron and bare steel mains and metallic service lines throughout its service territory over an accelerated period, an accelerated time period. When Duke Energy Ohio embarked on this program in 2001, it had approximately 1,000 miles of cast iron mains and 192 miles of bare steel mains. These mains were aged, with some dating back to circa 1873, and were much less reliable than plastic pipe. This program has significantly reduced Duke Energy Ohio's operation and maintenance expenses and has enabled Duke Energy Ohio to operate its infiltration, its distribution system at higher pressures, which provides benefits such as reduced water infiltration into the gas mains. Duke Energy Ohio currently has no cast iron and bare steel mains remaining in its distribution system. In an opinion and order dated November 13, 2013, in the matter of the application of Duke Energy Ohio, Inc., for an increase in rates, case number 12-1685-GA-AIR, the commission issued an order, an opinion and order, allowing for Duke Energy Ohio to file an annual rate changes to recover the cost of this program, including camera work expenses. I have enclosed a list of the proposed new rates. These rates are subject to change after the commission holds public evidentiary hearings. Although this letter is a formal notice to you, in accordance with Ohio Public Utility law, we also have representatives available to discuss our rate proposal. If you have any questions about our rate proposal, please call our rates department at 513-287-2341, and we will respond to your inquiries. If you have any other questions regarding our service, please call your Duke Energy Ohio Customer Service Manager. As always, we value your role as our customers and as the elected representatives of the communities we serve. Very truly yours, James P. Henning, State President, Ohio-Kentucky, Duke Energy Ohio, Incorporated.
Mr. Mumper.
Move the letter be received and filed.
Seconded by Mr. Bonzal. Is there any discussion? Call the roll, please.
Mr. Bonzal.
Yes.
Mr. Clark.
Yes.
Mrs. Stickley.
Yes.
Mr. Sanker.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Mumper.
Yes.
All members present voting aye, the motion carries. Next is a letter from Jerry Stoker regarding review for preliminary and final PUD plan for Health United XU Hub, location 1723 Clenney Avenue.
To Norwood City Council, on December 6, 2017, the Norwood Planning Commission held a public hearing for review of the Health United XU Hub, the Preliminary and Final Development Plan at Xavier University Campus. The Planning Commission unanimously voted to recommend approval of the preliminary and final development plans in accordance with Section 1155.14 of the Norwood Zoning Code. Per Section 1155.14 of the Norwood Zoning Code, the recommendations of the Planning Commission are to be forwarded to the Norwood City Council for public hearings and final action. It is requested that a public hearing be set no earlier than 30 days from the receipt of this memorandum. If you have any questions concerning the above, please contact me, Jerry Stoker, Building Commissioner.
Mr. Bonzal.
Yeah, I move the letter be received and filed, and we schedule a public hearing for the 23rd of January, 2018.
Seconded by Mr. Clark. So we had kind of come to the conclusion that January 23 would be the best time, the earliest we could do it, which would give us sufficient time for the 30-day notice. So the motion on the floor then is to receive and file the letter and to set the date of the public hearing for the January 23, 2018 council meeting. Call the roll, please.
Mr. Bonzal.
Yes.
Mr. Clark.
Yes.
Mrs. Stickley.
Yes.
Mr. Sanker.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Mumper.
Yes.
All members present voting aye, the motion carries. Next is a letter from the Ohio Department of Liquor Control regarding Sherman Market.
Dear Mr. Oday, the Division of Liquor Control has carefully considered the application for the 2017-2018 renewal of the Class C1 liquor permit. The Norwood City Council objected to the 2017-2018 renewal of this permit. The Division held a hearing on October 30, 2017, to determine whether the 2017-2018 renewal should be denied for any of the reasons contained in Division A of Section 4303.292 of the Revised Code. An investigation was conducted, which included a review of the renewal application, the evidence submitted at the objection hearing, and information gathered from various documents and reports. The Division denies and rejects the application for the 2017-2018 renewal of this Class C1 liquor permit based on the following grounds and facts. One, the place for which the permit is sought has been declared a nuisance pursuant to Chapter 3767 of the Revised Code since the time of the most recent renewal of a liquor permit issued at the applied-for location, Revised Code, Section 4303.292A2D. Two, the applicant has operated its liquor permit business in a manner that demonstrates a disregard for the laws, regulations, or local ordinance of the state, Revised Code, Section 4303.292A1B. On April 26, 2011, the Division of Liquor Control issued a C1 liquor permit to Pal Cincy LLC to operate a beer carryout business at 1762-1764 Sherman Avenue, Norwood, Ohio. The liquor permit remains in full force and effect. Ahem Oday is a managing member of Pal Cincy LLC. The permit business is located at the intersection of Sherman and Carter Avenues and is commonly known as the Sherman Market. From July 1, 2014 to July 21, 2016, there were 217 calls for police service directed to this business. The calls were for drug activity, fights, theft, criminal damaging, and disorderly conduct by intoxication. 217 calls for police service during this timeframe is an inordinate amount for the city of Norwood and placed a tremendous burden on police resources. The Sherman Market has a general reputation in the community as a place where drug transactions frequently take place. On July 4, 2016, July 15, 2016, and July 25, 2016, the Norwood Police Department Drug Task Force used a confidential informant to purchase narcotics at the Sherman Market. On two of the dates, drugs were sold to the confidential informant by an employee of the store. On July 27, 2016, the Hamilton County Prosecutor commenced a nuisance action in the Hamilton County Court of Common Pleas against the Sherman Market and 1762 and 1764 Sherman Avenue due to the drug activity and high volume of police calls. On December 19, 2016, Common Pleas Court Judge Schweickert found the Sherman Market and 1762 and 1764 Sherman Avenue to be a public nuisance and ordered the premises closed for one year. Three, the Division also denies and rejects the 2017-2018 renewal application for good cause, Revised Code, Section 4303.271A, 4301.10A2, and Sections 4301, chap, what is that, 1-1-12B. The pleading and facts recited in 1 through 2 above are restated as is fully rewritten herein. You are entitled to appear this order to the Ohio Liquor Control Commission. If you want to appeal this order, you must file an appeal within 30 days of the mailing date of this order with the Liquor Control Commission, 77 South High Street, 18th Floor, Columbus, Ohio, 43215-0565. Telephone, 614-466-3132. The order, the notice of appeal should contain a statement for of your reasons for appeal. Please attach a copy of this order with your appeal. Sincerely, James Canepa, Superintendent.
With your pleasure, Mr. Mumper.
Move the letter be received and filed.
Seconded by Mr. Bonzal. Is there any discussion? Mr. Bonzal.
Yeah, thank you, Madam President. So I just want to thank the Norwood Police Department, the Hamilton County Prosecutor's Office, and in particular, our Law Department for all of the work that kind of led to this point. I've talked to a couple of my neighbors about this, and everybody is generally very pleased that the liquor permit will not be renewed, so, thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Bonzal. Any other discussion? Motion on the floors to receive and file. Call the roll, please.
Mr. Bonzal.
Yes.
Mr. Clark.
Yes.
Mrs. Stickley.
Yes.
Mr. Sanker.
Yes.
Mr. Mumper.
Yes.
All members present voting aye, the motion carries. Finally, we have a letter from Mayor Williams regarding request executive session to discuss employee contract negotiations pursuant to ORC Section 121.22G4.
Dear Madam President and members of council, I write to ask that the council consider holding an executive session at its regularly scheduled holding an executive session at its regularly scheduled meeting this Tuesday, December 12, 2017, as permitted by Ohio Revised Code, Section 121.22G4, preparing for conducting or reviewing negotiations or bargaining sessions with public employees concerning their compensation or other terms and conditions of their employment. If you have any questions regarding this matter, please do not hesitate to contact me. Sincerely, Thomas F. Williams, Mayor, City of Norwood.
Mr. Sankar.
Mr. Madam President, I recommend that the letter be received and filed, and that the council go into executive session for the reasons so stated in Mayor Williams' letter.
Is there a second? Seconded by Mr. Mumper, is there any discussion? Call the roll, please.
Mr. Bonso.
Yes.
Mr. Clark.
Yes.
Mrs. Stickley.
Yes.
Mr. Sankar.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Mumper.
Yes.
All members present voting aye, the motion carries. We'll move into executive session. The, I ask those who are in attendance if you will leave the premises, and if we will turn both the TV and the sound off, we will reconvene back into regular session, but only to excuse absent members and to adjourn. Thank you, everyone.
I think we should have a safe deposit grant that we can get the mortgage. That's what you're saying? That's what you're trying to do. I asked the chief, he would have to give us a statement. He was trying to get it to write to us. So once we get that information, we'll be able to give you a better pitch. We want to get it to people who will say, so this may try. So this is active list. And so we could do a year, but again, this is a standard. And what I had thought, I was saying, so that is the game. Is I give you the question to cheat. So this is the first thing. Just sort of falls in, we can get the six and seven and the thousand. There's a spending, we can save that. And that's all we got to do. We want to know what that comes as a government. All these, all these years, years. I agree with you. And that's why we just want to control that. It's what we're trying to do. Like I say, when you're at the very end. We're just hoping for a year. But again, this is a standard. And what I had thought, I was saying, so that is the game. Is I give you the question to cheat. So this is the first thing. Just sort of falls in, we can get the six and seven and the thousand. There's a spending, we can save that. And that's all we got to do. We want to know what that comes as a government. All these, all these years, years. I agree with you. Right then, I appreciate you. And that's why we just want to control that. It's what we're trying to do. Like I say, when you're at the very end. We're just hoping for a year. But again, this is a standard. And what I had thought, I was saying, so that is the game. Is I give you the question to cheat. So this is the first thing. Just sort of falls in, we can get the six and seven and the thousand. There's a spending, we can save that. And that's all we got to do. We want to know what that comes as a government. All these, all these years, years. I agree with you. And that's why we just want to control that. It's what we're trying to do. Like I say, when you're at the very end. We're just hoping for a year. But again, this is a standard. And what I had thought, I was saying, so that is the game. Is I give you the question to cheat. So this is the first thing. Just sort of falls in, we can get the six and seven and the thousand. There's a spending, we can save that. And that's all we got to do. We want to know what that comes as a government. All these, all these years, years. I agree with you. And that's why we just want to control that. It's what we're trying to do. Like I say, when you're at the very end. We're just hoping for a year. But again, this is a standard. And what I had thought, I was saying, so that is the game. Is I give you the question to cheat. So this is the first thing. Just sort of falls in, we can get the six and seven and the thousand. There's a spending, we can save that. And that's all we got to do. We want to know what that comes as a government. All these, all these years, years. I agree with you. And that's why we just want to control that. It's what we're trying to do. Like I say, when you're at the very end. We're just hoping for a year. But again, this is a standard. And what I had thought, I was saying, so that is the game. Is I give you the question to cheat. So this is the first thing. Just sort of falls in, we can get the six and seven and the thousand. There's a spending, we can save that. And that's all we got to do. We want to know what that comes as a government. All these, all these years, years. I agree with you. And that's why we just want to control that. It's what we're trying to do. Like I say, when you're at the very end. We're just hoping for a year. But again, this is a standard. And what I had thought, I was saying, so that is the game. Is I give you the question to cheat. So this is the first thing. Just sort of falls in, we can get the six and seven and the thousand. There's a spending, we can save that. And that's all we got to do. We want to know what that comes as a government. All these, all these years, years. I agree with you. And that's why we just want to control that. It's what we're trying to do. Like I say, when you're at the very end. We're just hoping for a year. But again, this is a standard. And what I had thought, I was saying, so that is the game. Is I give you the question to cheat. So this is the first thing. Just sort of falls in, we can get the six and seven and the thousand. There's a spending, we can save that. And that's all we got to do. We want to know what that comes as a government. All these, all these years, years. I agree with you. And that's why we just want to control that. It's what we're trying to do. Like I say, when you're at the very end. We're just hoping for a year. But again, this is a standard. And what I had thought, I was saying, so that is the game. Is I give you the question to cheat. So this is the first thing. Just sort of falls in, we can get the six and seven and the thousand. There's a spending, we can save that.[506.01]